And he's just like, "Oh, relax."
Yeah.
I know. He's blown up. He's like, "Too young." He's surprised. Because you're healthy. And I'm like, "No, that... Let's see if my records of last time I was meeting him had so much trouble at the same time." There's a problem. It's not like I am learning or anything more. It was like... I mean, it's getting worse.
I'm trying to have plans. I really need to be attractive. Is that what it is?
It's kind of like mine. Like it is. I'll be fine.
Hey, Steve.
It's a noisy crowd. You really have to...
Bill isn't working. Beautiful. Thank you. We have had closed session and we've reconvened to open, so we're going to start our meeting this evening off with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I think we're going to have the strong voices at the back lead us off, so if everybody will stand. Ladies, when you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you.
That's lovely.
First item up is the agenda. We need approval of agenda. And the recommended actions. I move the board to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Sandra, will you call roll?
Scott.
Yes.
Kim Marie.
Yes.
Eileen.
Yes.
Angie.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Andy.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And the next item up is honoring excellence. Dallas, will you come to the podium, please?
Good evening, everyone. Well, we started this here, this has been several years ago now. We, I made, I remember about two years into it, we said that we should just start reserving November or December for this state championship celebration for the Liberty High School cheerleaders. And I'm really actually thinking we should maybe do that, so let's just go ahead and lock them, lock them in next year. But no, we're very glad to have the Liberty High School cheerleading squad with us this evening. And as you probably have heard, they recently brought back the state championship trophy from Columbia and the 2015 Missouri State Cheer Competition. They took first place in the Class V large category. And this is the varsity cheers' seventh state championship. And with us tonight, most of the members, do we have all of them, Coach Most? Most of them here tonight clad in their Blue Jay blue. The coaches looking very Blue Jay-like as well. Coach Brenda Moats leads this group, assisted by Daisy King and Madison Young. Coach Moats, if you would like to come forward, I think she wanted to introduce us to the senior members of this squad, and then we will present them with an award and probably have our traditional special ovation here in a moment as well.
Still taller than me? Hi, thank you for having us back again. We really appreciate it. I know that some people say it's just an expectation that you're going to see us here. One thing that people don't see is the hard work these women put in, starting in March, when they make the team. We graduated 13 seniors last year, so it's a whole new team this year with 28 new members. And to have that many be replaced is difficult, but these young ladies stepped up to the challenge. And one of our big things this year is, it's always easy to go into something being the underdog, because no one expects much from you. But when you're on top for as long as they've been, it's more of a challenge and the pressure can get to you. And one of our sayings has been, "Pressure produces diamonds." And that's something they took with them on last Saturday, when we went to the state competition. It was so fun to see them execute such a great routine. They did such a great job that, as a matter of fact, it's the highest margin of points that we've been above the team below us of 23 points. It's huge. Usually it's about three or four points, and if you look at the score sheets from other teams, they're about two or three points away from each other. So to see 23 points ahead is, just tells you how hard they've been working. This has been a different year for us. Coach Cahill helped us get new uniforms, which was a new thing. We were excited about that. They are white. For any of you that know anything about white and children and teenagers, it's very difficult to keep them white. They've done a nice job of that. And tonight, the seniors were able to pick out their new state rings, which was an exciting moment for them as well. I'm going to introduce my senior captains, and they are going to continue to introduce the other 12 seniors that we have on our team. Another honor that I did want to mention, we had two girls that were named the All-State Cheer Team this year, which is a new item that they added to state cheerleading last year, and that is Annabelle Anderson and Lauren Potts. Annabelle was unable to be here tonight, but Lauren is one of our captains. Nicole Wood, Kelsey Garrett, and Olivia Hosef, if you would come forward, please.
Okay, so from all of us, I think we just want to say thank you. It's always great being recognized for an accomplishment. And after the seventh year, I think it's still nice that you guys are recognizing us. So we just all wanted to say thank you. And now we're going to take a couple seconds to introduce all the seniors. So I'm Kelsey Garrett. This is Nicole Wood. Olivia Hosef. Lauren Potts. Taylor Lee. Hunter Siegfried. Jessica Shepherd. Desiree Leeson.
I can't see anybody.
Lindsay Zaz. Tayja Dotson. Avery Hunt. Annabelle Anderson, which she can't make it. And I think I got them all. Twelve of us. There's a lot, but...
Nicole wanted to add something.
Oh, yeah, forgot. We're having a fundraiser at Pizza Ranch, so it's business attire. You guys can all go in your suits.
Tonight?
When?
Tonight.
Oh, it's been going on since five. It goes till nine.
We're going to go back over to the ranch and hang out for a little bit.
Awesome. Well, we have an award. We're very proud of this group and the continued great things that you and your squad continue to do, year in and year out, representing LPS in the highest of ways, so.
Congratulations. We have a tradition here that we honor lots of great accomplishments in our district, but we also like to give a standing ovation to the state winners, so.
And before I wrap up, and I actually am going to have a couple of our cheerleaders get the banner that we recently received, bring it here to the front. Display it for the board and our audience here tonight. And I will read a brief press release. You'll continue to see this in the coming, in the coming days and weeks. But LPS was recently recognized at the Project Lead the Way Missouri State Conference for implementing PLTW in every school in the district. PLTW is a nonprofit organization that provides a transformative learning experience for K-12 students and teachers across the U.S. and engages students in hands-on activities, projects, and problems reflected of real-world scenarios and careers. So we have had great success with this. Probably seen a lot of that out there on our website and in our other social media outlets. And I know Dr. Tucker attended that conference just a week or two ago in St. Louis. And we wanted to make mention of that this evening, and that will be going up here, coming up in the next few days, I'm sure. And ladies, we appreciate you for modeling the banner as well here this evening, so. And before we wrap up, I did want to let everyone know that we just wrapped up a tremendously successful United Way campaign. I believe after the numbers were totaled, we came in with our second-largest campaign in district history, raising nearly $60,000. So that would not have been possible without all the support of all of our buildings district-wide. And I know they, they had a lot of fun throughout that process as well, so I just wanted to make a mention of that. And with that, that concludes honoring excellence for this evening.
Fantastic. Thank you, Dallas. So in a moment, we're going to take a brief break to congratulate our winners. But before we do that, I just want to make sure everybody knows that if they would like to make a comment during the public comments section of our meeting, they should fill out a blue card and bring it to me or one of the other board members. The cards are just outside of the door, right past the glass window there. And so in a few minutes, we'll come back and get back to the public comments session. In the meantime, let's take five minutes and congratulate our honorees here.
Can I have these signed?
Yeah, you're good. I wouldn't hand you that.
I'm sorry?
I wouldn't hand you that.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Yes, but only if you stay till the end. Okay. I know, I...
That is definitely a safety issue, but I am unsure if this is happening and if it is, why. Some teachers make their volunteers sign in as they enter their classroom, as well as after signing in in the cafeteria, so the teacher knows who's with who. Signing out again before they leave. This is an excellent idea. If it's too much chaos with the end of the school day being so close to the end of the party, the party could be moved up by 10 to 15 minutes, so dismissal and signing out isn't a worry. A lot of parents felt a problem with the new guidelines is the timing of when the parents were told this was going into effect. The party had already taken place, the fall party had already taken place, not giving the parents the option to choose from the other two. Our son's teacher is doing a hat lottery, but if you attended the fall party, she is telling us we are not allowed to be in the lottery, but we may be notified if she can't find enough volunteers or someone to run the party. We find this incredibly rude. The second problem with the new guidelines is the way it came about. This was decided with no input from parents. After a little bit of research, we really think splitting the parties into Thursdays and Fridays like they do at Shoal Creek, a largely populated school, would be a great alternative. Another option could be to still have parties on Friday, having K through 2 in the morning and 3 through 5 in the afternoon. When I received the email, my initial reaction was to call Dr. Quorum. She encouraged me to call Mrs. Wilson, which I did. Mrs. Wilson did listen to my point of view, some of my suggestions, and just my general complaint of being told that I was not allowed to attend two, possibly all three, of my son's school parties. She said that she is not saying I can't come and put it back on my son's teacher. I asked her about some other options, but she dismissed these, saying it was too disruptive to the day. She also admitted to breaking school district policies on party days. After my phone call to Mrs. Wilson, my husband was even more frustrated about the situation and decided to email Mrs. Wilson and our son's teacher to let them know how he felt about the situation. Part of his email spoke about how parental involvement at its highest should be praised and not downsized to make things more convenient. The school is extremely lucky to have this many parents who want to be a part of the school functions. If safety was such a huge concern prior to this, why haven't we all been informed? Should we have not been sending our children to school on those days if it was such a concern? After this email, which also contained our ideas for new solutions again, we were sent a generic copy and paste email from Mrs. Wilson that she sent to other parents who were concerned as well. We received no response from our son's teacher. In conclusion, we are here tonight because we feel we're not being heard by the principal, and we also know there are other safety issues that could be addressed if this issue is such a safety concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Maury?
Hello, my name is Maury Gilchrist. I have a third grader there at Kellybrook Elementary. I'm just, I won't hit the same points my wife did, but I wanted to acknowledge, I'm also a firefighter for Kansas City, Missouri, and I completely understand the safety aspect of it. Unfortunately, I've had to provide the Heimlich on both my children, unfortunately, more than once. The issues that really concerned me and I felt were a justification to call these quote "safety issues" where I attended school lunch today with my son. A third of my life will be away from my family as I work 24 hours on and 48 hours off. So my goal is to be in my son's life as much as I can, whether that's at school, after school, or before school. So my time is extremely limited, like most others are, but with being gone 24 hours, it's a lot more time, there's a lot more time restraints. The safety issues that I really saw today was that there was one person in an entire lunchroom of approximately 200 children. There were kids that were being ignored with raising their hands up to get other utensils or other napkins. A few kids, I said, "Whoa, whoa, where are you going?" And they said, "She doesn't see me, so I'm just gonna go do my own thing." And went to the bathroom. One kid went and got more stuff. And I said, "Hey, hey, you gotta ask." And I even went to the lady that was there. Her name's Jeannie. She's a secretary there at Kellybrook Elementary. And I said, "Jeannie, you either need a pay raise or hire seniority to get out of this lunch duty. This is, this is crazy." And she said, "Oh, unfortunately, I'm used to it." So when I read an email from Mrs. Wilson that states that it's a safety issue, and I threw myself out there and said, "I would be more than happy to stand out there and try to redirect traffic." I spoke to four other parents that also agreed. They would absolutely do that. I think it's unacceptable for people to block the fire lanes. There's a ton of police officers, as well as firefighters, that work and live up in that area that have also said, "Absolutely, whatever we needed to do, because we really enjoy that time and for those parties." I also did some simple math. If you have three parties a year and there's only four parents, that's an opportunity for 12 parents out of a class of minimum. My son has 23. That doesn't give people a lot of the options to even be in the running for that drawing. The other thing that I didn't like the timing of was it was, this new implemented guidelines was set after the fall party. People weren't notified prior to it. The last thing I wanted to bring up about that was the volunteering and the people outpouring. I have an older sister that was a teacher in Raytown several years ago, and she couldn't get parents to show up for parent-teacher conferences, unfortunately, let alone school parties. I was impressed by Dallas's numbers with the collection from the fundraiser you guys did, and I know that this district is a great district. We specifically, when we house hunt, stay in Liberty School districts. And my son's school right now is teaching leadership, a win-win situation. Listen to others before you make a final decision. Consider others' points of views before you make a final decision. And none of this was given. When I responded via email, I threw out those two other options and indicated there was other people or other schools that did it other ways. I was confident that we could find a common ground or something else that would work. And the generic email was, literally said, "My decision," as the building administrator, "my decision was final." And I just didn't think that if we're going to teach leadership through listening, understanding, considering the outcomes from other points of views, make it a quote "win-win situation." I just helped my son with his homework on it last week. This was completely ignored in any suggestions. So that was, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Maury. All right, the next several items are on the consent agenda, and our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several ideas for approval of the board by a single motion. Most of the items listed under the consent agenda have gone through board subcommittee review and recommendation. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. So we have...
I move the board approve the consent item 7.01. 7.04 approved.
Thank you. Any discussion? Anything should be removed? All right, Sandra?
Scott?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Thank you. Next up are policy revisions, and we have a slew of them on the agenda this evening.
We do. We have the first section, which is 7.01. It's policy revisions that we first saw last month, as we brought them forth in the first reading, and so we're ready to recommend those to the board's need for adoption.
Second, taking note that there are also a couple of policies to be rescinded. And just as a comment, typically when we rescind a policy, the content, the material is captured within another policy that we're recommending for approval. So it's not as though we're doing away with anything in particular, just capturing it in another setting via a different policy. So 7.01 would be those items recommended for approval. Whether questions or clarifications, anyone needed on any of these, have to review? Not, do we have a motion to adopt the listed policies?
I move the board adopt the listed policies on second reading. Rescind policies BHB, BHD, and JMH.
There's no further discussions? Sandra Lee, call roll.
Emily?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
7.02 is accompanying administrative procedures to those policies. And you'll note, these are for informational purposes only. There's no formal action required by the board. In addition, we are removing one procedure from our compilation, that's KL-VP regarding public complaints or concerns. So again, just an informational item, but that includes the policy portion of this thing. All right.
Just a quick, sorry, that public complaints or concerns, um, procedures actually supersubscribed. Something else?
Correct.
Just take it out for a different.
Correct. Similar to the policies as we capture those in other places. So unfinished business includes 2016 and 17 course proposals. Are you... Yeah, you have a document that was provided for your review, and that is an adjustment to course titles in part, and some minor adjustments looking ahead. So that document's provided for your approval. And again, this is for the 16, 17, in terms of course proposals. Dr. Williams and the academic services team worked closely with buildings to be able to generate this list. Anything to add, Dr. Williams?
Yes, the table, the first table is the set of course title changes per action. The second table is an item of information, and as I spoke with Dr. Jacobs, with Angie, and with Dr. Westfall this afternoon, there is ongoing work around college world lit, and at the point that it is, that it's through Missouri Learning Standards, it will also be an option for ELA credit, not just elective credit at 11th grade. So I wanted to make that point of clarification. What happened in the ELA course title changes is we have been calling them communication arts, which is not aligned with DESI's ELA or English Language Arts title. And Dr. Solory has taken calls from some college admissions folks reading transcripts, believing that COM Arts is a speech type course. So this further clarifies that it is an English Language Arts course and brings us into alignment with DESI Semantics.
So there were some classes, the grade level assignment was getting adjusted as well? Is that the next item, or is that...
That is information in the second table. And Dr. Westfall, and Dr. Jacobs, and Dr. Adams, as well as curriculum council representatives, have been working through that. There is an open conversation, particularly around some confusion with college world lit that I was made aware of this afternoon. So I wanted to open that up publicly and say that I've asked Dr. Westfall to meet with the teacher in question and with the administrators, just to clarify any misunderstanding, because that is certainly not something we want to move forward.
And the portion of your one action on the line, is that on last month?
Course proposals are the first list.
The ELA...
The last one?
COM Arts 2.0, I believe it was. I would have to go verify.
Okay. It was on last month?
I don't remember for certain. Sandra, do you remember for sure?
It can be a first reading tonight for action.
This is just one of those things I'd almost rather air on the front.
Given that it's not, given that it's not a new course either, and literally just changing titles.
There's no content.
That's why I say...
That's the only thing that can action.
Correct. That's the listing of courses as they appear from DESI materials and the DESI guidelines, trying to make what we do as a district in sync with...
And this is first reading?
The DESI piece.
So will the job approval then?
Those pieces were informational items only as far as the advanced placement courses.
Okay. There's no action for it?
Yeah. What we'll do in the ensuing days is provide clarification at the building level as it relates to 11th graders and 12th graders and being able to take those four courses.
Okay.
Clear? The motion, the recommended action is I move the board approve the course proposals/changes as presented. If you...
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? All right.
Scott?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Yes. Strategic plan adoption. Yeah, 8.02, the last several weeks, we've mentioned that our strategic leadership team has been working on revision and updating of our strategic plan as a district. Appreciate our leaders that serve in that capacity in reviewing the areas that they are assigned to. So the adjustments that you see this evening in the finalized document are really minor in nature, being able to celebrate the accomplishments that we've achieved, but then also updating the documents in terms of those items that are ongoing, with very minor adjustments along the way. So we can present that to you this evening for your approval. This has come a long way since four or five years ago when it started? If not, Sandra, will you call roll, please?
Scott?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Under new business, contracts and agreements? Under 9.01, a contract we're presenting to you this evening for approval on first reading is a provision to allow for one of our systems called Keystone Information Systems to interface with a new vendor that will have to be with one of our insurance carriers. The fiscal load is minor, and it's about $2,400, but that will assist us in being able to move forward with our online enrollment process. I know that Cindy and her staff work closely with Keystone, as well as Dr. Volbular and his department are working with that online enrollment process. So anything else to add from your end?
This allows us to interface with the provider to push out the information so that they can manage our benefits for MetLife.
At the employee level?
Yes.
That would be our recommendation this evening to move forward with that contract.
Is it going to require more reading?
Given that it was new as a new vendor, and that it's actually a new module, so to speak, within our Keystone, structurally developed, we'd really need to bring it to you as an available program.
Appreciate that. Sure.
Okay.
It's at the very bottom. I move the board approve the Keystone Information System Agreement as presented.
Sandra, will you call roll?
Scott?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Yes. Board Candidate Workshop. It's that time of year. It is. 9.02 dates for our Board Candidate Workshop. The date has been scheduled for December 7 at between 5:00 and 6:00 p.m. So this is really for our audience and our viewership, but that is upcoming in the next couple of weeks. That will actually be prior to our December study session. So those that are interested in perhaps signing up for board service, you're certainly welcome to attend that event. It is typically facilitated by the board president, vice president, and other board members that are interested in helping out the board secretary and myself in terms of giving a little bit of a glimpse as to what board service may look like. So again, for those that are interested, that date is coming up on December 7, and scheduled in this room, the board room, between 5:00 and 6:00 p.m. I know Eileen was present last year. Look where you are now. Again, for those interested, appreciate you taking advantage of that opportunity to learn more about board service. 5 to 6 on 7. That's it. Got it.
5 to 6 on 7. It's number 10.
Payment for separate consideration? Yeah, 9.03 is pulled out as a separate item, and at any time we have payment to board members, we want to certainly do that, separate. This is simply a mileage reimbursement, so we will present that to you for approval this evening. I move the board approve check number 664179, and now at 127486. Issue to change the reading for mileage reimbursement. You'll call roll, please.
Emily?
Yes.
Hmm. Yes.
I think I have to abstain for this one.
Laurie?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. All right, we have the audits. Yeah, 9.04 is a review of our 2014, 2015 district audit that was conducted earlier this last summer, and want to welcome to the podium Diane Klosterman, who is actually just getting off the plane.
Yes.
And made it in great time. So we'll turn it over to her to present this evening in regards to the 2014-15 district audit.
Thank you. Yes, this is a record for me. I know they say get back in the saddle from vacation, but this is definitely a record. I think I have my clothes on the right direction and everything. I just got back from a trip with my daughters to New York and had a great time and refreshed my mind on your audit report on the plane back. And this is an easy audit report, so it wasn't tough to study for. I want to start, though, I am a little bit frazzled, and I do not want to forget to thank Cindy and her team. We audit nonstop, from the moment we get here until the last day of field work. And Cynthia has assigned Denise Seaver as our point person, and Denise, sometimes we'll have the information we request before lunch on our desk when we get back after lunch. It's just that good of a turnaround time, and we really appreciate that. It allows us to get in and out focused on your audit instead of having to track things down. And I want to say a great thanks to Cindy for that, because that's not always the norm. Sometimes we're always out just bird dogging things, and we don't have that here, and we really do appreciate it. I want to mention also, there's been a lot in the news about state audits versus financial statement audits, and I want to remind you that Westbrook and Company is always available for consulting. If there's something you want us to specifically take a look at, we're available for that. We've been doing a lot more of it. Schools will ask us to just come in and look at their payroll, or have a look at a particular program, or a building, or a department, or a number of buildings. And it's been really valuable. I just finished with the board, or visited with the board right before I left on vacation, and came back with a lot of good tips that I was able to help them with. They're not one of our audit clients, but just to share some information with them that might be helpful. We spend a lot of time going out and doing consulting. I personally do a lot of fraud work. In 14 years, I've never not been working on a fraud, and so you wonder if I'll ever get done writing recommendations, and probably the answer is no, because there's some new thing out there that I've come across, or I've sat through a conference and learned, or read from a state audit report and felt like I needed to implement that in my audit process. So we have a meeting before we come out on everyone's audits and talk about new things we want to do. We also offer a class to all of our clients to keep them up to speed on all of the GASBIs and the different things that are coming down the pike. And so we try to be a partner to all of our school districts and share what information we can, and I think Cindy has been to those, and plus it gets her some CPE, so it's a win-win. It's free. And so we try to just work with our school districts throughout the year. So just don't think of us as your auditor that comes in and gives you a report and are on our way. We're available throughout the year. So this evening, I just want to visit with you a few minutes about the financial statements, go on and talk about a couple of recommendations, the changes in federal programs, and then I'll move on out. Today, we're going to start with the financial statements. One of these is going to work. Side?
Scroll, scroll button. On the side, oh, no.
Okay. I think I remember this one, struggling with it a little bit last year. Okay, I'm going to start with your financial statements, which is right behind the table of contents, and the opinion on your financial statements is a clean opinion, an unqualified opinion. That means the financial statements were presented fairly in all material respects. Now, I want to make sure and let you know that we didn't make any journal entries while we were here. That means that the financial statements you relied upon throughout the year were the same financial statements that you're seeing this evening. Again, that is a really good thing. You want to know that the financial statements you're relying on throughout the year are the same financial statements that you see at the end of the year. There isn't a bunch of changes, and that's the case here. Clean financial statements, no journal entries to get them to look that way. Now, I'm going to move past the management discussion and analysis, but I do really like that section of the financial statements. It actually is written by management. It introduces you to the financial statements. It gives some comparisons to the previous year and some explanations of changes. So I encourage you to take a look at that, but we're going to move on to page 13 of the financial statements, which is the statement of activities, and what I think is the most difficult to read. So I want to introduce you to that just for a moment. And as you look down through there, you can see it starts with the types of activities that the district has on the left-hand side. Instruction, bus service, all those sorts of things. So you're not going to see utilities and telephone bills and things. And it starts with the expenditures and slides over to the right and indicates where there's charges for services or where there's grants or other types of revenues specific to that line item. And you see a big deficit over there on the right-hand side, and that's where your property taxes, sales taxes, and basic formula comes in and covers those costs. As I slide down through and compare to the previous year, I noticed that your instruction costs and your instructional staff support were both greater than the previous year. You continue to grow. We'll see a few pages back, your ADA increased by 180 when compared to the previous year. As I slide on down through there and I look at different costs, I can tell you that both your food service and your community services cost decreased. Bus cost increased. Food service and community service, the reason I have those red boxes is because those are the only two line items on the financial statements where you can actually break even, and you did just that this year. Food service and community service threw off a profit, and when food service throws off a profit, that gets pigeonholed into a fund on the next financial statement where it has to be spent only on food service. So it is assigned to that particular area. And then community services can be parents' teachers, preschool, before and after care. If you were a Vo-Tec, it would include Vo-Tec. Anything outside of K-12 that you're using your basic formula and tax dollars to pay for. And you can see there that community services did well as well. Now, I can tell you that food service can fluctuate, I'm sorry, community services can fluctuate a bit depending on how much Title I goes towards that, because that's in there as a coverage for that expense as well. And if you have any questions, just let me know. All right, there we go. The next page is your balance sheet, and the reason I focus on this one is because a couple of years ago, the board approved GASP54. And GASP54 indicated you needed to let the readers know how much of the financial statement money, how much of those net assets is actually available to pay the day-to-day bills. So you see that revenue up there on the upper left or right-hand corner, $38 million. Did I say revenue? I meant net assets. But you want to slide down here to the lower left-hand corner and look at unassigned. That's how much of the money is available to pay the day-to-day bills, because all of those other funds are restricted or committed in some way. If you look down through your general fund, you can see that the non-spendable and the restricted, $55,745, both of those are scholarships. And the reason they're in two different buckets, non-spendable typically in scholarships means you can only spend the revenue. The rest of it has to stay pat, and so you only have a certain amount of that's available. When you go on down to your commitments and your assigned, you can see commitments is empty, but assigns has a sizable amount of money in that. That's the student activities. The health insurance funds that are set aside, should you change insurance companies, you're going to have to cover some of those costs. And then finally, some food service revenue that was greater than the expenditures. And so those are what's sitting in assigned. As you slide across and you look at debt service, debt service that funds is always going to be restricted. You have to have funds available to cover your principal and interest each year, and that's written into your bond documents. And then you get over to the capital projects fund, and it's split. You have some assigned and you have some committed, and those are split by whether or not the board had committed to any expenditures by June 30. There's footnotes back in your footnotes on all of those line items and what makes up those totals. And we have that footnote in here if you wish to look at it. All right, let's move on to the debt. There were some things that happened this year. 2015 refunding bond was issued, and that refunded the 2006 bond, and you can see substantial retirement of debt there, but you're also going to see the addition of the 2015 refunding bond. You also see the 2015 lease participation certificates, and that was covering some construction, I believe, that's still underway, if I remember correctly. And then as you look over to the far right, you can see what's due within one year. And this next page, and these are footnotes, this is note I, and this is your indication of what your principal payments will be over the next bunch of years through 2030. And as you have growth, you know you can continue to issue debt in order to build the buildings to educate your students. Now, these are graphs that we like to add to the financial statements. They're our additions to the financial statements, not required components of the financial statements. This first one's a revenue graph, and we put it over five years, so you can kind of And we put it over five years, so you can kind of see what's been going on with your revenue. When I look at your local revenue, we know that your property tax revenue was significantly larger by about $4 million. Your sales tax also increased, but was offset by your in lieu of taxes. So most of that increase in revenue came from your property taxes. As we look on down at your state revenue, it also had a good bump of about $2.2 million, and that had to do with your increase in ADA. So you saw that bump there in state. And this year, high needs fund was also state revenue, not federal. So you see a little decrease on your federal revenue because that high needs money was covered by state this year. And this is your expenditure graph, same thing, five years. And we do leave out the capital outlet because we don't want to skew your percentages by capital outlet. It can really drive down one of your numbers. So we pull that out and just leave in here all of the things that you can actually compare apples to apples on. And that's what you want to do when you're looking at these. Some districts will compare themselves to other districts. If you compare yourselves to other districts and you say, "We've got 81% of our total expenditures on salaries and benefits," you've got to look at what the other districts outsource. Food service and transportation are the big ones. This district does its own transportation, food service as well. Okay, and that's the reason you're there at the 81%. You're kind of at the top of our grid as far as comparison to other districts because you do all of that in-house. All right. And this is your reserves graph. And we have your reserves at a little over 19%. That's two and a half months reserves. And you can see the district's done really well with managing the reserves. And then the next graph has to do with your ADA. And like I said, you had an increase by 180 ADA, and you've just got the straightest line going uphill there as far as your ADA is concerned. And that's what's generating increases in instruction costs, all of your different costs that are associated with educating students. So you're going to see those costs continue to increase right along the same line that your ADA increases. All right. We also look at your compliance with Missouri laws and regulations. That's really huge. A lot of your money comes from the state and the Fed. And so we have to make sure as part of our audit that you're in compliance. And what we're stating on page 44 of your financial statements is that the district's assertions that it was in compliance agreed with what we found when we were here. We look at attendance and transportation, your budget compliance, your construction and how you bid and put your information out for bid. And we didn't find any material non-compliance. We also found no immaterial non-compliance. So the district did a very good job. And Cindy can tell you, we look at a lot of information as far as the compliance. We have an auditor that just comes out and looks at nothing but transportation and attendance. And we also look heavily at your fund for expenditures to ensure that you're putting things out for advertisement, doing your RFPs, keeping documentation of the bids and how you made your decision on those awards. And we found no non-compliance in that area. We haven't seen any non-compliance for years in budget. Cindy does a very good job on that. The board approves the transfers at the end of the year, and so the budget always looks good when we're having a look at it. I want to let you know that we look at your internal controls to determine how we're going to plan our audit, the scope of our audit. But we don't opine on your internal controls. But as you board members that have known us for a while, we're going to let you know if we see something that you could shore up or strengthen. And so we don't give you an opinion on your internal controls, but we do indicate we saw no material weaknesses in those. And Cindy can tell you that we spend a lot of time talking about them when we're here. And I'll share things with her that I've learned from the previous years I've been out doing my work. And we talk about the controls because not only is implementing internal controls are important, but also monitoring those to make sure that things haven't changed. You have a change in personnel and then the control all of a sudden falls through the cracks. So it's very important that the district monitor those internal controls after they've implemented them. Of course, we look at your federal programs and the rules are changing on that. The district has significant federal program revenue, therefore you will still have a single audit, but how we perform the single audit is going to change. We'll focus on certain compliance requirements and we'll also be able to focus our programs that we audit on a risk-based approach rather than a, oh, we haven't done this one in the last two years approach. And so every federal program that has over $750,000 of revenue, we can now look at it and determine based on risk if it needs to be audited again this year. Has it got new components as far as compliance? Have we got new folks in there? And we need to have a look and make sure that they are covering all the bases as far as that federal program. We did have to audit three federal programs this year. We audited Title I, Special Education and Perkins. We haven't done Perkins for several years. We do Title I and Special Education every year or so, and I think we're going to change that up this next year. We'll probably hit food service and some other ones we haven't gotten to do in the past that we'll get to do this year. So that major program determination, instead of being 300,000 like it's been in the past, it's going to bump up to 750,000. So it will throw some out. We can still pick them up if we think they're risky. So they're not out of the picture, but it allows us some leeway to determine what we're going to audit going forward. And we say here, there's no findings on the financial statements, and there's also no findings as far as the federal programs are concerned. Now, I want to remind you, there's three levels of findings, a material weakness, significant deficiency, and controlled deficiency. Material weakness is the most severe. It means there's a weakness out there that may not be caught or may not be caught and corrected in a timely manner and allow a misstatement of the financial statements. The next level down is a significant deficiency, and the lowest level is just a controlled deficiency. And that's where we're at right now. So we're on the report to administration. I'm going to share some things with you that maybe we are asking all of our districts to do or maybe it's something specific to your district. This first one is purchasing documentation. Like I said, I looked at your purchasing to verify that you were in compliance with state statute. I also need to make sure you're in compliance with your own board policy, that they don't differ, that you've got a board policy that's out there that you're not even able to live up to. And we didn't find any non-compliance with your purchasing policy or the state statute. But the district has a purchasing department that's over in another building. And I think it's important for the documents or at least a summary of those documents from the purchasing department, come over to Cindy's department so that when accounts payable is paying the bills, they know that all the hoops have been gone through as far as purchasing is concerned. And Cindy's already implemented that since we were out on the audit. She's probably using a standard form or some summary capability to get the information over to her accounts payable department. And they can feel comfortable that the board policy and the state statutes have been followed because the documentation is there. This next one is new vendor procedure. I've added this to 95% of the audits I did this year. New vendors need to be vetted to make sure that it's a real vendor. The larger your district is, the more concerned one has with that because you've got folks out at building level requesting vendor additions. We just want to make sure they're real. Kind of like a school district near y'all had several years back where the auditor had all the employees come in and pick up their paychecks, and there was a bunch of them that didn't get picked up. That means they were paying some employees that weren't there anymore. There were some fake employees out there. So we want to apply that same concept to vendors and make sure that we're only paying vendors that have provided a service or a good to the district. This next one's fuel usage. We do this in a lot of our cities that we audit. And that is that when you have fuel usage, that you input your odometer readings and then assess that information through calculation of miles per gallon to make sure that only district vehicles are receiving fuel. And so I believe Cindy's working on how to implement that. That'll take a bit of time. I was at a district the other day and they didn't have the capability of key and odometer readings. So it may be the case where you have to have software, equipment or whatever to make that happen. Do y'all dispense your own fuel here or do you buy? Okay. The bottom one here on bank accounts, that's just something I'm recommending to all my districts. And it has to do with just querying the local banks to make sure there's no bank accounts out in the area that are in the district's name that's off balance sheet. It could be as simple as someone thought they would just set up an account to make it easier to manage their fundraiser or whatever the case may be. So I'm just recommending to all of our districts. I actually heard this at some continuing education I went to. Just make sure you know about all your bank accounts or all the bank accounts that are in the district's name. And that last one just had to do with federal programs. And part of the requirement associated with all the new rules that are coming down with federal programs is you have some procedures in place that deal with cash receipts of federal dollars and expenditure of federal dollars. And Cindy already has that written into the district's procedures. It didn't have to be a big dissertation, but it did have to indicate how you're going to make sure you spent the money within three days and how you indicate that you're spending the money on approved expenditures associated with that federal program. All right. So in summary, clean financial statements, no material weaknesses, healthy reserve, continued increase in your ADA. I understand Liberty is one of the fastest-growing districts in the state, so we know that AM schedule is not going to stop where it's at. You'll continue to have to take on new debt and find new ways to house all your students. So a really good audit, like I said. Is there any questions that you have for me?
A lot of info. I want to go back to, I think it's page 11. Go back to page 12.
Okay. Reserves.
Can you go to 12? The next one.
ADA.
That's the line that indicates what one of the fastest-growing districts in the state. We continue to add kids to the district. We are pushing 12,000. The only reason that dot's not on 12,000, I think, is because this doesn't include early childhood.
Well, and in part, your average daily attendance is not equivalent to a head count.
That's true.
So keep that in mind.
So pushing 12,000, and then you go to the last line, the one before this one?
Uh huh.
Which is the fund balance.
The reserve ratio.
And see what a turnaround there's been over the last several years. You go back to, you go six, seven years ago, we were going in the wrong direction. And we are now going back in the right direction. So I think those two graphs could mean positive story. So handle the growth and maintain balance as well.
And I remember when the district started that curve back on the upward side, and I was really impressed with the district and how transparent it was with everyone in the district on why cuts had to happen, why we just couldn't do status quo, we had to think about our expenses going forward. And I think the transparency was the biggest part of the success. People just want to know what's going on, and then if they do, they'll buy into that and be a part of that approach to make that graph go upward like it did.
Thank you.
It's still only two and a half months of expenses, though.
I know. Isn't this the scariest thing? We're a big fan of three months. And the reason we are, and you've probably heard me say this before, you need three months of reserves because you don't hit your top of your curve on your revenue stream until December. So if you get down there in one and a half months or two months, then you're looking at tax anticipation note or paying your bills out on a 45-day pay or something along those lines. So you need those types of reserves. But I tell you, Cindy and the superintendent have a huge job, you know, keeping their arms around that budget and making sure all those numbers come out right. All right. Well, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Cindy, and the team that supported the audit and throughout the year did the work that allowed us to land where we were at the end of year. All right. Report from administration. We have several reports.
There's a motion down there.
Oh, sorry. You're right. That would be good, wouldn't it?
I'm going to board approve the 2014, 2015 annual district audit.
Sandra?
Yes.
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 Yes. Now, report from administration.
Yeah. First one, 10.01, academic services. We'll turn it over to Dr. Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Tucker. The first piece of information out of the academic services report that I would like to highlight relates to House Bill 1490. We continually update. I know that curriculum council representatives and teacher teams have reviewed the workgroup products and have submitted their feedback to Dr. Westfall. And we will be submitting on behalf of Liberty Public Schools our feedback prior to the December 2nd open comment window being closed. So for your awareness, you will get the full feedback in a Friday update, but we are compiling that right now. Some celebrations to note. Our student councils all did very well. Kelsey Stuff, heritage middle school teacher, was named District Middle Level Advisor of the Year. Scott Carr was the Northwest District Administrator of the Year. Lindsay Plaster was High School Level Advisor of the Year nominee. And Liberty North Student Council is the Northwest First Vice President for the coming year. So a lot to celebrate, a lot of good student leadership taking place there and the sponsors and principals facilitating that growth. Also, Fabian Gomez Gonzalez, a Liberty North High School science teacher, was recognized by the Science Teachers of Missouri as the STAM Beginning Teacher of the Year for an Excellence Award at the conference. Just congratulate him. And the final thing to highlight out of the academic services report is next Monday, the Smithsonian National Air and Space Museum will have a special event at South Valley Middle School. Marty Kelsey, former South Valley Middle School teacher, now an employee with Smithsonian, is coming to Stacy Lester's class, and they are going to be forming and studying their own impact craters as part of a webcast. And then that will be broadcast on May 25th, 2016. So our students will be on that TV show. Pretty exciting opportunity. And I know I got another email from Mrs. Mullen yesterday. She's really excited about it. So something to look forward to. If you can stop by, you are certainly welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Next is 10.02, financial report.
Thank you, Dr. Tucker. As you see in my report, the fund balance percentage is currently projected to be 19.31%. A little bit of an increase. I also wanted to take this time to publicly thank Denise Seaver, Joe Maloney and Tony Hires specifically for all of the hard work they do to make our audit such a success and during the year to keep things rolling along and enable us to have such a successful audit. We could not do it without them, so I really appreciate them. I watched a budget evaluation seminar presented by DSE this week. They are still saying that the basic formula is paying out a little bit lower than anticipated at 6107 versus 6110 that we really hoped for. They are still hoping it will get there, but they are saying that the weighted average daily attendance is coming in a little bit higher than expected, which is driving down the amount allocated per school. So we're still hopeful that we'll get up there to 6110. But the projection document does show 6107, so we're good with that and we'll stay there until they tell us any differently. You will also notice this month in the projection document that it was updated to include the new demographic data. So that did change the scenario going out a little bit through 2021. We're still above the 18% that we want to keep it at, but it did come down from what we were projecting in October just due to the changes in the anticipated enrollment levels. We are starting budget talks again. We met with Curriculum to see what their need is going to be for the next year, and I will be visiting all the buildings before Christmas just to have that preliminary discussion with them so that in January and February, we can get rolling again to develop next year's budget. And thank you very much.
Next is 10.03, community resources.
Thank you very much. We have a report uploaded here. Noteworthy in that report is probably the events unfolding with our benefits enrollment. Our window opened up last week and closes at the end of this week. We have almost 52% enrolled now, so we're about halfway through and about halfway through enrolled. My team of specialists work very hard to ensure 100% enrollment. That's not something that just falls into place naturally for those who are familiar with benefits enrollments. It takes a lot of hot pursuit. We offer many evening and Saturday sessions where employees can come in and get one-on-one assistance. We have many of our employees and retirees, in fact, take advantage of that. Missouri public school systems do offer insurance to retirees as a part of state statute we do as well. And so those sessions come in very handy for our retired employees who participate in our insurance. So I would be remiss if I didn't thank the specialists that work very hard to track down and ensure 100% compliance. A special appreciation goes out to Gloria Catlett, our benefit specialist, Debbie Wagner, also a benefit specialist who worked very hard. And then they receive assistance from our other specialists even though their areas don't specifically apply to benefits. So Melody Fritz and Cindy Rollins, Jill Vodchester and Christina Philpott all work very hard to ensure that we are 100% enrolled at the end of this week. I'm confident we do it every year. I'm confident these fine workers will get that done again today. So I don't know, Dee, if you want to add any special kudos to that team. They're working very hard this time of the year. So the other elements in the HR report really stand on their own merits, so I'll entertain any questions if you have any.
Next is operations.
Thank you. Just to draw attention to a part from what you mentioned in the report that's attached. One is an action item from earlier in the evening was a visitor's pass management system. The proposal was approved. It just is a matter of awareness, beginning in early '16, we're going to start rolling that out into each building, each school building and this building, which will have a process by which you hand a ID to the gatekeeper who will take it and produce a badge that you can wear as a visitor into the building. I mentioned in Friday's update some of the highlights and benefits of this. a process by which you hand a ID to the gatekeeper, who will take it and produce a badge that you can wear as a visitor into the building. I mentioned in Friday's update some of the highlights and benefits of this. I think, one, to have a unified system across the district certainly is beneficial. It will also ease and make it a little more smooth at the entrance point for visitors so you're not signing in and signing out. It does allow for a quick check off the sexual offender list, and then also has background check capabilities that we can flag on a nascent basis. Last, it's compatible with Power School, and then we have an ability over time to implement additional modules, so we'll kind of look at that over time. I also wanted to just kind of flag for tonight, knowing that on December 7th at the work session, we're going to take a look, initial look at facility master plan and kind of lay out what that will look like over the course of '16 and a little bit beyond. There are a handful of components to that. One is the actual RFP for Architectural Services, which will go out this week and should be before you in December for formal consideration. We also have had some initial conversations with Patron Insight kind of along the communication line and surveying line of this initiative. The demographers report, which you all are familiar with and have been presented. We've had conversations with George K. Baum to look at kind of the bond capability as we look into the future of vote down in '18. And then last, I just want to kind of present out there something that will probably have to be kicked around is just boundary adjustments given the demographers report, some of the imbalance with the growth across the district. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
That's a lot.
To segue off of that, we've been teeing those pieces up over the last several months, so we will not have a six-hour study session December 7th, I guarantee. Certainly a lot to look at, a lot to digest in looking at the district in the next seven years. Thanks, Mr. Anderson. In respect to my report, I did have a couple of additional items outside of what's posted. First, to recognize the efforts of the Education Foundation Board and their staff for hosting a phenomenal event Saturday night in which 150 people were in attendance and they raised approximately $1,500, just a little over that, in about a three-hour window for that activity. So appreciate the efforts in the area that man into hosting that first, but hopefully reoccurring annual event and looking forward next year. Another item to put on your radar is in respect to the legislative session that will begin in January, the pre-filing of legislation. That window is actually December 1st, but we'll start seeing those legislative positions and resolutions, bills that are forthcoming, particularly that will relate to public education and impact us potentially this spring. Another item to note is that the Northland Center for Advanced Professional Studies, Northland CAPS, is in the process of interviewing for their executive position this week, so we're looking forward to seeing who rises to the top and filling that vacancy that is made available for Northland CAPS. Dr. Williams alluded to House Bill 1490, and just wanted to reiterate that the window or opportunity for public comment, while it opened November 2nd, is still open through December 2nd. So appreciate you mentioning that. Another item to note is tomorrow night at around 5:30 in this room, our Vision 2020 Committee, which is appointed by the board, will be beginning its conversation. So their first meeting will happen tomorrow night at 5:30, and looking forward to centering our work around the Gallup Student Poll that was administered this fall to approximately 6,000 students in grades five through 12. So we're looking forward to diving into that data and creating work groups in and around the areas of hope, engagement, career, and financial literacy, as well as the area of entrepreneurship. So we think that out of that process will come some action steps, perhaps some initiatives in moving the direction of the district forward, particularly as it relates to students' perceptions and how they view themselves, as well as their experience in those four key areas. So more to come in that respect. The last thing to mention is your assignment for December 7th, and that is our book study entitled Ed Journey, and that we would ask that you be read up through chapter three. So if you've not already done that, you've got a couple of weeks to cram, so look forward to that conversation. That concludes our administration reports unless there are additional questions from you all.
Any other questions for? All right. And since you're speaking of the upcoming meetings, I just want to highlight the school board election dates one more time. Board candidate workshop from 5:00 to 6:00 on December 7th. Filing opens December 22nd and closes January 19th. And then we have study session on the 7th, regular board meeting pretty late in the month, on the 21st, so keep those on the agenda. Any board committee reports we need to update on?
I serve on the Liberty Economic Development Sales Tax Board, and we need to do it for 20 years. We met last week, basically that tax board put in place due to the sales tax that was passed a year ago. It's the city overall rate for economic development purposes specifically with the South River Parkway and around the square. And so when they put together a budget, they submit proportions of it to us to make sure that what they are recommending meets the voter intent from the election. So we met last week and passed a resolution basically saying that the expenditures that they were proposing met voter intent, and we got an update on the projects. So next year is going to be another very busy year for road construction and other things around the way to the square. Basically, for six months, we'll probably be in some form disrepaired, but the end product will be worth it.
Looking forward to the updates that they're planning. It's pretty exciting. Any other committee reports? On board remarks, I've been reflecting on the last week, and it's been a very full week in the news, and some things going on in Paris that are just very disheartening. So hearts go out to those who are trying more to repair their lives. At the very same time, though, I had the opportunity Thursday, Friday, and Saturday to see our young people in action in this community, and it was very hopeful. On Thursday, I had a chance to sit or participate in the Reality U session at Liberty High School where all of the juniors came in and tried to do some budgeting, real life. They have a salary to work with, they have taxes to pay, they've got housing, and they were making great decisions and trade-offs, and I got to talk to like 250 of them and was very impressed with the young people at Liberty High, and I know it is the same at North. And then on Friday, I had the chance to congratulate some of the kids for character traits at the elementary schools and the middle schools, and citizenship was the character trait we were recognizing that day. And I found it to be pretty profound that on the day that people weren't being very good citizens of this planet, we had great citizens in our schools and in our community. And then on Saturday night, Jeremy highlighted the foundation. I want to give a shout out to the students from North, I think it was, the culinary students, who did the, prepared all the food, fantastic food, at the foundation event, and then a couple of young ladies from Heritage who provided some entertainment and shared their voices with us. So there is hope. Any other remarks before we adjourn? Thanks for hanging in there with us.
That's quite a crew to stay this long.
Yeah? All right. In that case, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Sandra?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you.